We're good?
Almost.
6:31, call the meeting to order. We will start with Mr. Larkin providing the invocation.
Yes. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and for the freedom that we enjoy. Father, we ask that you bless all the citizens of our great city, our county, our state, our nation, all of our first responders, caregivers, our military, both at home and abroad, actively engaged. Father bless us, watch over us, that Thy will be done. Protect us as we go our separate ways. And Father, just help us to do what you see is right for us to do. We ask in Thy name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. As a reminder, the rules of decorum are in effect for tonight, as always. And we'll start with citizen comments. Do we have any turned in sheets?
I do not.
Does anyone have any comments to make tonight? All right, with that, citizen comments will be closed. No citizen comments tonight. Next, approval of the city council meeting. Motion to approve? I'm sorry, meeting, many minutes, yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion that we accept the June 11th minutes as written.
I will second that motion.
All right, have a motion second. Any discussion? Everyone good? All right, now calling a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? It's unanimous. Show their minutes approved unanimously, please. All right, first, Atmos Energy will present a donation to the fire department, if you will, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Eva Hummel with Atmos Energy. Thank you for having us here today. I office out of 1310 Highway 66 in Garland. And I also have with me Blake Parker. He is our operations supervisor for Atmos Energy, and he oversees the McLendon-Chisholm area. And before I start with the presentation, I just wanted, I wasn't sure if y'all were aware, but June is National Safety Month. And so, as we're coming to close, closing to the end of the month, I just wanted to share some information about natural gas safety. I did put some natural gas safety guides out here at this table, so I really encourage everyone that's here today to please take this information. It has some really good information on what to do if you were to smell natural gas. And we have our mascots, Rosie the Skunk. And Rosie the Skunk is our mascot that tells you what you need to do, and she also has information here on using all senses when it comes to determining if there's a gas leak. She also tells you what to do if you do find one. So rather than get into all of that, I just want to let you know that there's information there. And then we also have Gus the Gopher. And Gus the Gopher reminds everyone to always call 811 before you dig. So I know in the summertime, you know, we have a lot of projects that we're working on around the house, we're going to build a new shed, or we're going to do something, you know, on our property, just always remember to call 811 before you dig. You'll see, there's, with all the construction, you'll see the yellow flags, the red flags, the blue flags, they all are marking underground utilities. And you would be surprised that how many cut lines are due to third-party damage. So it's just, we really try to get this message out. It's a safety message, and I just wanted to share all of this with you today. So, just to recap why we are here today, in May Atmos Energy sponsored the Rockwall Chamber First Responder Appreciation Luncheon. At the luncheon, we shared words of appreciation along with a donation to our first responders in Rockwall County. Today, we are here to once again thank the City of McLendon-Chisholm Fire Department for all that you do to keep this community safe. We value the partnership that we have with our first responders, and I know that the City of McLendon-Chisholm is truly blessed to have some of the finest here. So, on behalf of Atmos Energy, in appreciation for all that they do, we would like to present a check, a donation of $2,000 to the McLendon-Chisholm Fire Department. So, thank you. And if, I also definitely want to get a picture, but I do want to say too, that as a part of the partnership, we offer natural gas safety training to our first responders. So we will be getting together with Chief Simmons to arrange for that training with our first responders. So, okay. Can I give somebody my phone too?
Three, two, one. I smoke it!
Good. Thank y'all very much.
All right. Well, thank you Atmos, that's outstanding. 6.2, Councilmember Larkin will make a public statement related to his tenure as council member.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So, members, Mayor Protem, members of council, staff, citizens, it's with a great deal of regret that I have to announce that I am not going to be able to serve out my entire term as a council member. I regret this terribly, but certain conditions, medical conditions at home, have relegated me into a position where I have to relocate back to Virginia to be near my wife's family. As it was, I, my intentions were to serve as long as I could, but unfor, unfortunately or fortunately, my house sold in like three days to Trudy's friends, so. So things are moving much faster than I had intended. It has been, so this will not be, this is not my official resignation, but I'm just putting out notice to the citizens, so that if anybody wants to volunteer to serve out my term, to the mayor or to the city administrator, please feel free to, you know, at least approach them on that. It is my intention to be here for the July 9th meeting and for the July 15th city council retreat, to assist in that. It has been my pleasure to sit here. So this won't be my formal resignation, this is just an announcement so that everybody kind of knows what's coming. And also, please, if anybody out there has a hankering to serve out a short term, okay, please feel free to approach the city administrator and the mayor. And once again, I apologize for not being able to serve out my entire term, but, you know, we deal with, we play with the cards that are dealt, and this is something I have to do. So with that, thank you very much.
Well, just personally, I can say, I'm sorry to see him go, but I understand, and understand how important he treats this job. So anyone who knows Mr. Larkin already knows this, and those who don't, he has been a tireless advocate for this city, and has done a lot for the fire department, and he's a real loss. And as a friend, you know, hate to see you go, but I totally understand. 6.3, John Poulster representing Innovative Transportation Solutions will deliver an update regarding TechStot projects in the vicinity of McLendon-Chisholm, including the 205 South project. Then council discussion questions after that. All right, sir?
Innovative Transportation Solutions, 2701 Valleyview Lane, Farmers Branch, Texas, 75234. I have the schematic here, I'm just going to drop off with Lisa for y'all to review later. It'll be updated, I think it's a little bit too large to go over here, but if we can ask some questions, I've got it here if you want it. Just take one and pass it around if you want. Okay, so real quick, this is the sheet out of the consortium report that we do monthly for the Rockwall County Commissioners Court. You'll note that there's a schedule on the top left section, you'll see that this project was environmentally cleared, April 12th, which means that the state is in the process of seeking rights of entry from property owners and doing appraisals. And by the end of this summer, first part of the fall, property owners should be receiving initial offers on parcels that are impacted by this project. The intent is to have the right-of-way completely acquired by November of 2020, and the plan's completed by August of 2021. And you'll note that there are significant number of utilities along 205 in this corridor, so we're anticipating about a year and a half to 20 months for the relocation of those utilities. With the project being ready to let of May 2022, currently TechStot has this on their schedule for 2025. It's the county's position that once we get these projects environmentally cleared and the right-of-way begun, we start partnering with our TechStot staff and the Regional Transportation Council to expedite receiving the funding for this project. The total cost of the project is $135 million from basically where John King ends just south of Rockwall, all the way into Terrell to US Highway 80. The project can be built once it's, now that it's environmentally cleared and segments, and probably the first phase of improvements on 205 will be down at 80 and 148 and 205, that intersection. And then the second section will be that section in the northern part between John King and the Rockwall-Coffin County line, essentially within the McLendon-Chisholm area. And then the final portion will be that area that connects McLendon-Chisholm to Terrell. This project is ultimately going to be a six-lane divided urban facility. We are currently building four lanes with, in the outside, to serve as the initial phase of the project, with the future two lanes coming in in the middle. The right-of-way acquisition that the state is acquiring will be for the full six lanes, they only acquire right-of-way once, so they'll be acquiring the right-of-way for the full cross-section, and then you'll just have a wide median and the utilities and the trans will be built to accommodate the ultimate improvements in the out years. We had our public hearing in, back in, back in the day, and the public made it clear there were certain areas of 205 that were more rural in nature and didn't lend themselves to what we call a raised median. So we're in the process of changing the schematic, the state is, to include and reflect that continuous dual left-turn lane, so that allow people that have driveways that front 205 to be able to come out onto 205 in certain areas and make a left turn from their driveway as opposed to going down to the next median opening and make a U-turn. There will still be areas, because of congestion, safety, and traffic numbers, where there will still be raised medians along 205, particularly close to larger intersections that have signals, so we can segregate the traffic movement. But there will be areas that have flush medians with the two continuous left-turn lanes. We anticipate having, the engineer on contract, half was on contract to do the environmental clearance, that's done. Now they're picking up somebody starting September to do the construction documents and for a plan ready to let of August 2021. So I know that sounds like a long time, but I think I might have said it here before, you've got dog years, you've got people years, and you've got highway years. And in highway years, August 2021 is right around the corner. So that's kind of a general overview, the schematic that I provided Lisa. While the, still shows the median in the middle, it still is accurate as to the number of impacts and the location of those impacts, because the right-of-way footprint is the same, we're simply going to remove the median and put in a continuous left. So I provided her that for y'all to review, write, put on your website. It is up on the TechStot website, for those who want to go look at it, it's keepitmovinDallas.org. And TechStot puts all of their, the Dallas District puts all of their project files up on that file server, and you'll go, it'll have interstate highways, US highways, you go to the state highways, hit that button, and a dropdown list will show you all the state highways they're developing. You'll see SH 205 from 75, 78 to 80, which is from Collin County through Rockwall into Coffin County. It's being done as three different environmental documents, but it's in one file on their website, so you'll, you'll be able to find it there. And then we downloaded the segments that were specific to McLendon-Chisholm and provided that to Lisa, so that y'all can review it, and if we got questions. Our consortium meeting is, I think, tomorrow night, so everybody's welcome to attend that. It's at the courthouse on the square in Rockwall at 6 o'clock, and we go over all the projects that Rockwall County is participating in with the state of Texas, including the 205 South project. And that pretty much concludes the report, I'll answer any questions, or try to anyway, if you've got any.
I just have one, about the medians, where you said the high traffic and you need to segregate, are those large enough, or the decisions of, sometimes they're brick, sometimes they're landscaped, that kind of thing, where does that come into play?
Are you saying the intersections?
Well, just the...
The aesthetics?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the, each contract has a, each project, the state allows 1% of the cost of the construction, so what is that, $13.5 million for the whole corridor, which is not a lot, for aesthetic improvements. And then they, they work with the communities along that corridor, if they want to augment those, that aesthetic appeal, they can. That's on the, on the landscape side, if there are retaining walls or certain structures that the contractor has to do anyway, there are a certain number of form liners and aesthetic package items, type of pattern, et cetera, that are free to choose. You've got your choice between fractured fin, the Ashler stone, that kind of thing, those are free to you to choose. But if you get enhanced into pavers across the intersection, monuments, increased numbers of landscape items that may or may not require irrigation, those will all be things that the local communities will have to enter into an agreement with the state to do those. Now, I was, Lisa anticipated that question, and she asked me that earlier, and there is a program called Green Ribbon that is available to communities post-construction, because we used to do this during construction, we found out that guys that are really good at building roads suck at landscaping. So they've come in behind the contractors with a separate landscape contractor that do these green ribbon programs, and I offered to Lisa that once the project gets to a point where it's under construction, we, we can start the process with a green ribbon program through McLendon-Chisholm and, and look for partnership that way. That was a long answer to a very short question. I usually try not to do that. Yes, whatever the next one is.
I was just curious to know, not on if you were the right person to ask, but like on the speed, how do we know?
Excellent. So currently, the design speed for SH 205 is a 45 mile an hour design speed. Now, the 45 mile an hour design speed has nothing to do with what the speed limit will be on SH 205. It just sets the, so that if you're driving on a 45 mile an hour design speeded road in McLendon-Chisholm, it's the same as in Montana, same as in California. It sets the vertical changes in grade that you can do and the horizontal curvature that you can do at certain speeds, so there's only certain radiuses and certain elevations you can do. 45 mile an hour design speed can be posted upwards of 65 miles an hour for the speed limit. What happens after a project is open to traffic, they will not put speed limit signs on the road, right? And they will request that the local jurisdictions avoid, since there's no posted speed limit, avoid enforcement, since there's no enforcement to us on posted facility, and let the traffic flow. And then the state will go out and do a speed study, and they will set the speed limit, or they'll recommend the speed limit to be whatever the 85th percentile is, so they'll go out and they'll do 350 cars over a five-hour period or whatever, and they'll throw out the top 15% high speeders, and whatever that 85th percentile is, that's what they'll set the speed limit. And then local jurisdictions can come in and adjust the speed up or down by seven miles an hour, round to the, to the nearest five. So you can go as much as 10 down or 10 up from what the 85th percentile suggests based upon sound engineering judgment, sight distance, conflicts on adjacent roadways, schools, churches, whatever you want to do. So it'll be set at what it is, the state will do that, submit that study to the communities along the corridor, and it'll be up to those communities to establish the speed limit through an ordinance, if you guys have that authority, I'm not sure. Some cities don't have that authority. That's another long answer to a short question. I don't, the answer is, we don't know yet. No, 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 this, if you don't change it, it will be set at that speed. So they'll do a speed study, and they're going to say, they'll notify you that they're going to go out and sign this road for 60 miles an hour. Then it'll be up to the communities to proactively pass an ordinance to lower it or increase it if they want, based upon that speed study.
And what's the general timeframe that you have to do to that?
They usually give you 60 to 90 days, that's plenty of time. And it, and what they do is they wait until there aren't any traffic barrels out there, there are, all the signals are operational, there's no temporary lane closure, so there could be four, five, or six months where you're out there with no posted speed limit on SH 205. Now, in the state of Texas, in theory, if it's not posted, it's a 30 mile an hour speed limit, but you can't enforce it. I'm not a lawyer, but I've been, I've been arrested a lot for speeding. Well, not arrested, that's too strong. Stop.
So I got a question about the flush median continuous left-hand turn construction. The, you guys had a similar project, TechStot did, up off of Highway 380, at the, at the very top end of the Dallas North Colway going through Prosper. Is that type of construction something similar to what we could expect?
Well, that's, that's a horrible example, yes, sir, that's, that's what we're talking about. I do work for Denton County too, and we're in the process of widening that to six lanes and putting a raised median, because the flush median is a seven-mile-long challenge, right? Because you've got, what happens is, is when you have four lanes of traffic or six, and the facility fills up, and you've got the 17, 18, 20 feet of flat open space in the middle, they start abusing it. But it also allows for development to have left turns out of driveways, et cetera. So they will monitor it, and if it gets to a point where the traffic volumes increase, they will come back in and do a raised median. But initially, with the rural fill of McLendon-Chisholm in certain areas, they, they feel a flush median is warranted. But yes, 380 is very similar to what we're talking about, only 380 is significantly wider than what McLendon-Chisholm will be when we're done.
Just for clarification, the, the two-lane going to four-lane ultimate up to six, does that four-lane with the two-lane turn, is that the six, or would it actually be a wider footprint?
It won't be any wider.
Okay.
That, they'll, what they'll do is, they'll set the full footprint for the six lanes, and they'll start from the outside and build the two outside lanes, and then they'll have the left turn lane in the center, and then they'll leave the, the grassy medians just, just for future use. And then in the future, they'll come in, and when they do the six lanes, typically they'll come back. The reason you want to do a flush median with a four-lane and not a six is because with four lanes, you don't have enough lane use to make a full U-turn without weaving into the, the lane next to you to make the turn or bumping over the curb. Once you have the full six, then you have enough room to make that turn with the four lanes you have, the left turn lane and the three approaching lanes.
Okay.
That's why they go to a raised median after they go to six lanes.
Gotcha.
During the, during the construction phase, the north phase, where it actually starts going through the city of McLendon-Chisholm, we have a, we have a large development in Sonoma Verde, and we also have a private school that's on the south part of our town. What type of variance is going to be allotted to make sure that we have good traffic flow and doesn't create any dangerous situations?
Well, I mean, you used the word variance, but I think you meant accommodations.
Accommodations.
Right. So this, the contractor will be required to keep, you've got two lanes of traffic open now with, with locations that you can turn off the road now, they're, they're required to maintain all access in the two lanes of traffic through the entirety of the project. It just may not be in the same location, right? They may shift you left and right, depending on the phases, but they're required to keep the same number of lanes open to traffic that you have now, since it's a two-lane road. They're not going to go down to, if they go down to one lane, it'll be for hours at a time, and you'll get two weeks' notice before that happens. But that'll be something the contractor requests of the state, the state will work with the communities on that, and then they do a, what's basically a, a lane rental. And so if they say they're going to be out there for two hours, they're going to charge them $15,000 an hour to close down that lane, and if anything past that, they start getting charged those lane hours. So they, they do a lot to keep the, the traffic flowing, the state does, as best as possible during construction.
Anything else? All right, sir, thank you very much, or, sorry, Lisa.
You mentioned in some areas there might be a sidewalk. How was that?
Oh, there will be sidewalks. I apologize. Uh, Federal Highway Administration now is, is required all states to accommodate all modes of traffic. So in all facilities that the state builds now, they put sidewalks on both sides of the road, whether there's any pedestrian traffic or not. And then on a six-lane, which this ultimately will be, the outside lane will not be 12 feet, it'll be 14 feet. And the theory is the bicyclist will ride on the outside of the outside lane, which is not true. People that are cyclists, they ride in the middle of the lane because it's the safest place to be. So they're just going to be in the middle of a 14-foot lane as opposed to a 12. But the feds require it's the 14-foot outside lanes and sidewalks for the continuous length of the project.
How wide are the sidewalks?
Five feet. Sometimes they're six, but typically they're five. And they're typically set back from the back of curb. So there's usually four or five feet from back of curb for the sidewalks. They rarely, they rarely like to put sidewalks up against the back of curb because if they do that, then they have to do some type of, uh, barrier to protect the pedestrians from the vehicles. And so they do a offset.
If the city wanted to do any enhancements such as an entryway feature on the north end, south end, or both, when would you need to, to know that?
I would say we probably should start talking about that now because we, if it's something that we can incorporate into the design set, and then y'all just pay for it, then that way the state covers the cost of the design. Um, but you'd have to do some design to show them what you want, but, but the, the hard inclusion of putting it into the plan set would be covered by the state. So I'd say we probably need to start talking about that now. And I, I can set up a meeting with you offline, and we can just kind of do a little charrette on, I, I helped a lot of communities with aesthetics. It seems to be a fairly important thing to people.
Thank you.
I'll answer any question even if I don't know the answer, if you've got one. All right.
Thank you. Six point four. Uh, nominate and consider appointments for regular and alternate positions for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, there are, looks like, let's see if I can pull it up, on P and Z, um, looks like potentially four people, uh, four spots open, right?
Yes, um, we always need alternates.
Oh, she is?
We do have another applicant that came in late today.
Okay.
It's at your place and not in your packet.
Okay.
Yes.
And that person is willing to serve on either P and Z or Board of Adjustment, not both, but one or the other.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, if that one... For some reason, my links aren't working on the individuals, I don't think. Oh, now, never mind. I wasn't doing it right. So the process for nominating specifics, right?
Yes. So, uh, you'll need four people, uh, whose terms are, are up. Um, you can reappoint those that have applied for reappointment or put new people in. Um, and then we need an additional alternate. We have one alternate, but we need at least one more for P and Z.
Okay. All right. So with that, we'll, uh, open this up for...
Should we do the reappointments separate from the...
I, I don't think you need to. Um, I, I think we would entertain nominations, and then, once we have all the spots, the four regular in the, um, is it three? One, two, three. Actually, it's three regular and an alternate that I believe are up. Three regular and an alternate. Once, once those are, once you put those names out, then you can vote on them in the entire group, make a motion to appoint and list the names. So names and nomination.
This new applicant will serve either, either of these?
They're willing to serve on either P and Z or Board of Adjustment wherever necessary. Uh, Board of Adjustment is, um, they're usually hurting for people, so you might look to put that person there if you want to consider that person.
With, with that, I will make a nomination part. Yeah, I'd like to, uh, propose that we, uh, reappoint, uh, Leslie to the planning zoning, and then we accept the applications of Daniella Swindle, Daniel Tucker, and Jody Wright for the planning and zoning commission.
Yep.
Fill all four positions. That's my vote.
Which one will be your alternate?
Those are your... Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah.
You may have a third alternate if you would like. Our, our code is a little inconsistent. In one place it says two, and in another it says three. And I don't think it hurts to have another alternate available. So I think that would cover all of the people here that have applied.
Is, is there an ordinance in place that brings somebody serving on both of these boards?
I, I think traditionally it's just one at a time.
At least best practices.
Because Board of Adjustment is an appeals board, so it could be that something is appealed to that other board.
In that case, I agree with, uh, what Trudy said. Um, we have Daniella on both, um, you know, applying for both or either or, um, for the Board of Adjustments or P and Z. Uh, so I think it makes sense. It just should be a, a alternate for...
Right. And I, and I would like to see Mr. Tucker become a primary because he has served on the Board of Adjustments. So he, he's looking for a change. He wants to continue to serve recently for a change. So I would recommend that we definitely make Mr. Tucker a reappoint.
Okay.
I, I think we're all saying...
Let's, let's, can we just take that one as a vote and, and have, hold a vote on that and just start knocking these out? Is that good, Lisa?
You want to do it one at a time?
Sure. I mean, just so there's no...
So you'll need a, a motion to appoint and then a, a second and vote if you want to do it that way.
Well, I don't know. That makes it easier, actually. If you know what, if you want to make one motion, or Trudy, or...
I would draw my previous.
All right. So a motion on the table to nominate, uh, Daniel Tucker, Daniella, I'm sorry, Daniel Tucker. Leslie. Okay, yeah, let me, let me give it a shot. Schwalzy. Okay. Well, uh, Leslie Schwalzy and Jody Wright as standing members of the P and Z Commission with Daniella Swindle as an alternate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So restating that, I think everyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Unanimous? All right, Board of Adjustments. Okay, so we have, uh, three people, uh, seeking reappointment. Uh, one person, Mr. Tucker, who we just put on P and Z, which leaves his spot open on BOA, and, uh, a new member to be appointed. So, uh, with that, the candidates, uh, are listed as Frank Fight, Gary Nichol, Herb Harker, and Daniella, Daniella Swindle. And David Cross. Thank you. Yes. So again, it's... Well, uh, Frank Fight, Herman Harker, and Gary Nichol are reappointment considerations. We need to fill two new ones.
The two we need to fill other than those would be alternates.
Oh. That's correct. Yeah. Yes.
I, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, appoint Frank Fight, Herb Harker, and Gary Nichol, uh, back to their positions on the Board of Adjustments, and that we accept, David Cross and Daniella Swindle as alternates. And that would put Daniella as, I actually as an alternate on both boards, I realize. And if that's, but is that okay? You sure?
I, I'm not sure that's okay.
You don't know if that's okay?
No, I don't. I think she needs to be one or the other.
Okay. But it's an alternate position, so...
Because if she, if she happened to be a voting member on P and Z and then something was appealed to BOA, it would get complicated.
I understand. So that would mean we would, we would be left with an alternate position unfilled at this time.
Well, um, you might consider Valerie Bodart had applied for P and Z, and if she was willing to serve on BOA as an alternate.
I don't have.
We don't have that name here, so...
It's not in our agenda packet.
On P and Z?
Negative.
She's on the P and Z.
Oh, it's on P and Z.
I mean, she's on the, um, she's on the list of applicants for P and Z, but if she would be willing to serve on BOA instead, maybe he has an alternate.
Oh, I see. Okay. She, she's listed down here as an applicant.
If she's willing.
Down here. We just didn't get the form.
Okay.
She's willing to serve on the Board of Adjustments? Oh.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. You are? Okay. And Les? Okay, Les, I'm in there. Yeah. I think I know what I'm doing. Not really. Okay. We have three reappointments, but we still need two alternates.
I, I think you have Mr. Cross.
And we have Mr. Cross and...
And Valerie.
And Valerie. Okay, that's... I would like to amend my motion. Mr. Mayor?
Protestant?
Man, this is crazy. It's a crazy night. It's okay. So I, I want to amend my motion to, uh, for the Board of Adjustments to reappoint Frank Fight, Herb Harker, and Gary Nichol to their positions, and for alternates to accept David Cross and Valerie. Hold on. I gotta get the last names. It's in, it's in another spot. Apologize for that, Valerie. Bodart.
Bodart.
Okay. As alternates. That was rough. I apologize.
All right. We have a motion on the table?
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
David Cross is, uh, very...
So, just so I understand, the alternate, that's not if someone ends up not being able to fulfill their obligation. It's, it's to reach a quorum on individual meetings, correct?
Yes. And we encourage everybody to attend. So if one person is, is missing, it's quite often that we have an alternate step in. So whoever's an alternate will be, um, will be able to participate.
Because they fill in anyone that can't make it that week. Or that month.
For those boards, we have to have four for a quorum to act, for P and Z and for Board of Adjustment. So it's a little harder to get that quorum, so...
So do they only get to participate if there's not a quorum, or if there's just someone absent? So...
No, we can fill the whole five spots for the meeting. So if...
Okay.
If we have a quorum, they can still step in if we have an open spot.
Got you. Okay. I understand.
And it's, it's fairly often, too, that someone can't fulfill their term and, and has to resign midterm, and then that person, one of the alternates would actually move into, um, the regular position.
So Bev, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have any, is Bev here? No, she's not. Never mind.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Never mind. Should've checked. Um, all right. So we do have a motion, we do have a second. Any more discussion? Were you wanting to revise the motion, or?
For David?
Yeah. Okay.
No, because I have Frank, Herb, or Gary, and I'm sure... I just know that David is...
Right. Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and we'll have a, yeah, and Gary, uh... All right. Well, with that, no more discussion, right? Let's have a vote. All in favor, uh, as stated by Mr. Larkin?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So that unanimous? Yeah, it's, those are, it's a tough one. We do apologize. It's, uh, they jump around a lot of different pages on these things, and it's a little awkward. All right. Six point six, uh, Discussion Action Regarding An Ordinance Amendmenting Chapter 11 Taxation of the Code of Ordinances by Adding A New Section 11.03, Repealing The Application Of The Sales Tax Exemption From The Sale Of Telecommunications Services Within The City Of McClendon-Chisholm. And as a recap, I did talk to Ms. Palomba about this, that essentially the, uh, it looks like quite a while ago, I guess 1987, cities were able to collect sales tax from cell towers or telecommunications in their district, right? And that's something we're new to, uh, with our cell towers, so this is...
Well, it's not just a cell tower. It's, um, mobile phones, any kind of telecommunications.
Okay. So, uh, we can actually, this has found money. Uh, we don't know how much, but by repealing this exemption, uh, we're able to receive taxes from those things, telecommunications and wireless, whatever it all entails. And go ahead.
As technology changes, the definition of telecommunications may change a little bit and would be included in here. Um, but by, I don't know why they did it, but, um, the way Texas set this up is telecommunications are automatically exempt from local sales tax unless a city council or a governing body steps in and does that exemption. So, um, in this case, this will allow us to capture our local sales tax for these services.
No, which is outstanding. I mean, this is a, a great discovery as far as I'm considered or concerned. Um, so we have a motion on this.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Chapter 11. Taxation of the Code of Ordinances by Adding A New Section 11.03.
Alright.
I'll second that.
Alright, any discussion?
Yeah, is this going to change from, is this going to change the rates? For example, if we have telecommunications going to our residents for either their their internet services or other phone-provided services, is that going to change the rates for our residents?
It will be a sales tax. They're already paying state sales tax, so this would be the local sales tax that would show up at the bottom of their bill.
So, it's a tax rate, that, so we are going to increase the taxes for our residents?
We have a sales tax in place for everything else, it's just this was excluded.
Okay.
How many other cities do not have that, how many other cities have this exemption? Are we the only ones that don't have it?
If you look in your packet, the page after the staff report, there is a list of all the cities in Texas that have the exemption. I highlighted the ones in yellow that are in our area that have it. So, cities that are kind of in our area, Allen, Arlington, Balk Springs have it, Salina, Colleyville, these are just North Texas. Corinth, Dallas, Denton, DeSoto, Duncanville, Fairview, Farmers Branch, Farmersville, Fates, Fort Worth, Frisco, Garland, Greenville, Highland Park, Highland Village, Hutchins, Kaufman, Lancaster, Louisville, Mansfield, McKinney, Melissa, Mesquite, Plano, Princeton, Prosper, Quinlan, Richardson, Rockwall, Rallett, Roy City, Saxon, Seekerville, Terrell, University Park. Those are the ones in kind of the North Texas area that have it. I believe that, and this is my opinion, but I think cities that don't do it are probably just not aware of it.
Since it defaults to them not paying. You seconded already, right? Any more discussion, if anything else?
Our city needs revenue, but I don't want to, I don't, because it seems like a tax that's just only going to be applied to our residents. It doesn't look like a tax that's going to be applied to transient occupancy that travels through our town, so. I'm not. Because it's just a tax rate for our residents, that's all it is.
Any more discussion? Alright. Hold a vote? All in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
So that, two to one?
You're voting?
You get to vote?
Oh, I'll approve it. I mean, I'll, aye, sorry.
You hear nothing, Mayor?
Right. Haven't voted on anything else. I didn't know I was supposed to, yeah, I'm happy to. Alright. That concludes the specific agenda items now, reports. 7.1, Building Official Report For May. These are available, we don't necessarily have to have discussion on any of these, does anyone have any questions, concerns? The Budget Report For May 2019.
Yeah, when it comes to the budget for documentation that we have, we're still seeing a pretty dramatic dip in our revenue that comes in from sale of building permits. We should be at 75% ratio from year-to-date from last year. We're currently only at 46%. It is, it is balancing out right now, because our current, our year-to-date revenue is at 74%, so it's just barely hanging in there. But yeah, the, our building permit sales is, it's down to a point where it's getting a little very concerning, yes.
Absolutely.
Well, if I can chime in on that, I brought it to the attention of the previous council, and it continues to be a problem that, that we projected like $496,000 of building permit revenue based, and that's, I don't like budgeting on uninsured income. And that's, that's something that hopefully we'll take into consideration as we move forward with this coming year's budget. But the reality of it is, we projected that we'd build maybe 105 homes through the year. Well, we're at 30, and we're two-thirds of the way through the year, and actually almost three-quarters of the way by the end of this month. In, in 2017, by this time of the year, we had built 85, we had issued 85 permits. Last year, by this time, we'd issued 58. This year, we've issued 30. There's definitely a downturn in construction. And, you know, I, I'm not going to pull back and say, part of it is because I don't think that we have any new subdivisions coming in at this time. It hasn't really been approached recently on anything, but everybody needs to be aware that this was budgeted based on building permits and based on the housing boom staying with us, and it seems to have slowed down. So, it is something to have concern over. The one great thing is that the sales revenue has us where we're not, it looks like we're not going to be in a deficit, which is very, very nice, okay? But the reality of it is, I do not think it's smart budgeting to budget on uninsured income, okay? Thank you.
And that is, I mean, with the slowdown in housing starts, that has affected us, but I think the thing locally that's affected us the most is the gap between Phase 1 and Phase 2 in Sonoma Verde, right? I mean, those, that's where most of our permits are going to come from.
I think there are a combination of things going on, so a little bit of uncertainty out there in the market, and then we're running out of lots. Sonoma Verde, too, has not quite gotten online yet, I think it will be very soon when they're ready to start using those Phase 2 lots. But you're right, we're just kind of at a little in-between place here. I think, I think we've seen a little bit of an uptick the last month or so. Hopefully, it will continue.
And a nice little light at the end of the tunnel that we've had so far is our new city attorney.
Yeah.
Mike Halli. If you look down into the budgetary report under Legal Services, you'll see that what he's been invoicing in the city is actually less than what our accounting and payroll services are for the last month. So, I think it's, I think that changing our legal advisor and our attorney to the city, I think has been, has been a very, very good decision financially, as well as he's been very diligent in what he does for us.
Agreed.
One other thing you might want to note is, we are starting to lose money on our utility fund. Part of that is, a couple of years ago, the rates were lowered, and then not so long ago, the North Texas rates increased. And so, we're, we've kind of lost about $30,000 this year, and we need to start making up for that. So, I believe there is a rate increase that will be coming, just, just to kind of let you know. We haven't decided what it needs to be yet, but we're looking into that now.
We have to have a public hearing on that before we raise a rate like that, since it's going to be a city-wide effect.
Well, it's just Sonoma Verde, they're the only ones on sewer, but it would just be a fee increase, like we would, by ordinance, we would adjust the master fee schedule. So, not necessarily a public hearing on it.
Maybe there, I know you've tried to look up the history on that, why we went from, what, $69 to $55? Or for dollars, I'm sorry. That adjustment was made and, and no real understanding of why, and now we're in the hole.
Well, part of it was a rate increase as well, so.
Right.
We have, I'm not sure why, but we get billed from Rockwall, who gets billed from North Texas, so sometimes there is a several-month delay before we actually get bills, and at one time this past year, there was actually a, I think we got a group of maybe eight, nine, 10 months all at once, we wrote a really big check one time. So, I think we were unaware that there was such a rate increase, and by the time it hit us, now we're kind of in this place. So, we just need to do a little bit of catching up. I haven't decided yet, I'm still kind of studying it, but we may need to do a formal rate study, because we haven't had one in about five years. Or it may just be that we need to just look at the math on, you know, what we've lost in the new rates and see if we can adjust that way without doing a formal rate study, but I'm still looking at that.
And what are the implications of a rate study? How much does something like that cost and how long?
I've asked our, our current city engineer if he could provide me an estimate, and he hasn't gotten back to me yet, but he is working on to see what that would entail.
Okay.
A lot of, just so you know, a lot of the work was already done, you know, a lot of things haven't changed as far as infrastructure and how it's set up and that we use a third party to maintain it. So, a lot of those, that information wouldn't change, and he wouldn't have to start from scratch with all that research.
Okay.
So, hopefully, it wouldn't be too much, but I can't say at the moment.
Okay.
I suspect that we need to have a, hopefully by the time we get to your retreat, I'll have a little bit more information, and we can talk about whether you want to implement the change immediately, once we settle on what the rate needs to be, or if you want to wait to the new budget year.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anything else on budget? Chief Simmons, you have anything you want to go through specifically on fire rescue report, or any updates on the department you want to share?
It's timeless, you have any questions regarding the reports?
No, I mean, I did see that the call volume is more heavily weighted towards the city this time, usually.
It's kind of, it's, since October, it's where the city, where call volume is heavily, is a little more involved in city limits than incorporated areas.
Okay. Alright, anyone have any questions for Chief Simmons?
To those reports, I know I haven't had an opportunity to ask the new council, but are those reports meeting your satisfaction? You're happy with those reports? You see everything that you want to see? Okay. Alright, yes, ma'am.
So, we're fortunate, grass fires aren't the normal number that we would see because of all the rain.
But I fear it, it's coming, it's going to jump on us here pretty quick, and, and you'll see a change in call volume when it comes to the amount of tops a call is responding to.
Yep. Alright. Do we have an, just one question, I'm curious, do we have an issue with down power lines or anything like that around here that you have to sit on?
No, sir, we haven't, through the numerous storms that we tend to have here now, we haven't had any major issues of down power lines. I think of one in the past maybe four months that we had, but then no major issues.
Great.
Transferable.
And a Rockwall County Transportation Consortium report. We already got that update today, that's even more updated than last month's road consortium. As you mentioned, anyone's willing, or anyone willing can attend those meetings at the Dallas or Downtown Historic Courthouse, 6 o'clock on the fourth Wednesday of every month, if anyone wants to hear everything going on in Rockwall County. Alright, anything else? You have anything you'd like to share, or updates from you?
No, I have no, no news or announcements at this time.
Okay. Larkin?
I had chosen a date, October 19, and I met together with some of the long-time residents, and we had a meeting, we had our first meeting last Monday, it went really well. And we are going to be looking for volunteers and people to work that particular day. Beginning of all this, they've got some great ideas collected in, and to see if they have time. We're still kind of looking at that one for sure, the time before we're looking for like any 10 or 12.
Great.
But if anybody would like to volunteer or work or help get some things together for that day, just contact me. We would appreciate the help there. Also, we'll give donations or like give door boxes, anybody up?
Alright, is that stuff that's going to be on the city website? Okay, yeah, I know, it's still very early, so, alright. Good deal, so if not, you have some?
Actually, I want to say something, you know, it's got somewhat out of place, if I notice Mr. Mayor was sitting here. And I don't know that you've got appropriate recognition for the work you've done for Park to Park, where you volunteered electrical services and stuff. I just want to say kudos to you, okay? It's, it's been something that, that's been a real blessing to the city, that citizens step up and donate that kind of stuff. Park to Park to the city, and I know that you've been publicly recognized for that, I want to make sure you know that we appreciate you. And he still volunteered this time, we've got some more things that he's going to come down and he's in the process of hooking up for. So, he volunteered a long time ago, and he didn't realize that we were going to keep him busy. We appreciate it. We're very thankful, yeah.
Got him locked in on tenure, huh?
We're, we're more than thankful for his services and what he's offered us.
Yeah, I'm glad you did, that's a great way, without anything else, we'll end that on a high note, call the meeting adjourned.